Okay.
So has everybody reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
Gary, I can bring them up on the, on the screen. Gary had a friendly amendment that I took the liberty of putting in.
So is the version that got sent out then, the revised, this should be the final version, is that right? So this has all the revisions in it that were discussed at various times?
I think we're just talking about the minutes now.
Just the minutes.
Just the minutes. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
So language, oh wait a minute, what is this?
I did not review the minute, so I will.
Oh, you already, did you already take, wait a minute, what is this?
These are the minutes for the, the meeting on January 12th.
Okay.
And Gary had this amendment that's in red that I went ahead and inserted for you guys to, to take a look at.
That violations are reported to the man, wait a minute.
That's fine.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yes.
So I can go ahead and accept that and then?
Have a motion to?
Still move.
Alright, okay. Alright, I don't, I don't multitask the way I used to. Alright, here we go. Okay, so we are now going to review and discuss the bylaws. Oops. Can you put those up, Christine?
I sure can, just a sec. I think I can. Nope, hang on, let me stop sharing for a sec. Just give me one second, I'll find it. So this is the, kind of where we started from after the last board meeting, but it doesn't have any of Fran's suggestions that you just sent out last week, Fran.
Well, what's the version that we got in the email?
Yeah, we have.
This one.
This.
Um.
It's this one?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to start at the beginning.
Okay.
Very good place to start, okay.
And. So at the. So at the end, at the end of this, I think it's a number one and a number two. So under, so starting at the beginning, duties of the office officers, no, that's wrong. Let me, let me just get my stuff working, okay. So. Article one, we are named. In number two, in article two, the objectives which are linked to the Virginia Code Regulations and the State Library. Should I say Virginia State Library System or just plain State Library System?
I don't know what the official title is, so if we don't know, I would suggest not changing it.
Or verifying what it should be.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, and local ordinances, I didn't know what that meant. I'm gonna ask questions like, what does that mean? If it's important, you know, if it's unimportant, we can leave it, but what, what would a local ordinance mean? I didn't understand that in, in article two.
I think that.
It would mean whatever Fairfax County has put out, so. For instance, a local ordinance would be the executives, you know, the, the authorization under which the executive is able to issue his emergency management declaration that changes various ways the county is providing services. Or it might be a local ordinance having to do with parking, let's say, and maybe that impacts the library, but we, the board, still have to comply.
And so would the strategic plan, for an example, be another example of an ordinance?
It's, that wouldn't be an ordinance, that's a, that's an agency guidance document, but an ordinance is something that's, I would assume, I mean, I don't know, but I think they're probably voted in by the Board of Supervisors would have control over county ordinances.
Okay.
So, and they're published in whatever the local county codebook is.
Okay, okay.
So I would, I would leave it.
So.
I don't know that you need to be more specific than that, that's just a generic.
Right.
Thing that covers everything.
Okay, I, I'm gonna be asking questions like that because since we are reviewing them, you know, we'll.
Sure.
It just answers my questions, because I don't have a, a background in law, so.
So Sheila?
Yes.
May I ask, then should Article One name be bolded like the other articles are?
I think so, yeah. Okay, so did you get that, Christine?
I did, thank you.
Okay. Okay, then Article Three, membership. So.
I don't know what this little 1970 is, that might have been a site originally to the version of the code that was used a bazillion years ago, but at this point, we're not really citing to various versions of the code. When we cite to the code, it means the most current version just automatically, so, I mean, I think that's just a leftover thing.
Or we should just, we could just take that.
Just take it out, and then you see, Christine, at the bottom of the word says changed to superscript. That means something should have been changed to superscript, but I don't know.
It was this, right here.
It was, because that was a big number.
Okay, so.
Big number.
Okay, okay.
So I think you can take out that change to superscript, because the one is already a change, a change, I suppose.
So going to the end.
Where is the footnote?
It's at the very.
Right.
End.
Why do we even have a footnote?
So each, our number, does everybody see it?
Oh, I see, okay.
Each Fairfax County Supervisor District is represented. So I think that needs to go up into membership, because it doesn't say how the board members. Are chosen for the library board, so I, I would think that that should go up. Maybe as number one under section one. Does any, just, do you all agree with that?
The only thing that gives me pause, and I don't know the answer to this, is that may not be our decision, which is why it's only a footnote for us, like, that may be the decision of the supervisors, so we don't have.
Control.
Yeah, exactly, it's not your bylaws, you are a recipient of that decision.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Number, so then the number, and I did look up forty, code forty-two, one through thirty-five, and so it does say, you know, how many people, how many members, five members, and. So we'll take out the nineteen seventy. Okay, so that part is fine, and then section two, a member whose term is expired may continue to serve, now that, we, so these are our, this is what we have decided, is that true?
I believe so.
Okay.
Do we ever, I mean, I don't really wanna, maybe I shouldn't even ask this, but. You know, there's this member shall be eligible to serve an unlimited number of successive terms, again, I don't, is that our rule or the supervisor's rule?
That's what I, that's exactly.
I think that must be our rule, because it's in here, but I don't really, I guess I don't really wanna open up a Pandora's Box, but at some point, you might fit email, it's worth considering whether that's how you wanna continue it.
Well, I, I think, I think that is a good point, Mary Ann, I, I don't think it's something we should gloss over, because. My term was, so when, when Walter Alcorn was. Was elected to be the new supervisor, I still had a, a year left in my term, and he, he came to me and said, would you continue, and then he asked me if I would do another term, so that seemed to be in his ballpark, that wasn't something that the board, I, the board decided on.
No, no, I'm, 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 I'm not saying it right, what the board seems to have control over is whether or not you are eligible to have an unlimited number of terms, he could decide to pick somebody else.
That's exactly.
But if he wanted to keep you, in theory, you could do this for the next twenty-five years.
Yeah.
And so the question is whether or not. We, as a board, wanna consider whether or not we term limit ourselves, so that there has to be turnover, like, supervisors can always decide that there should be turnover, but whether we think we should discipline ourselves so that there's always turnover, let's say, after a decade, or.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a long time.
I don't even know that, that you all have that purview, because the supervisor could ignore it.
Okay, well, I guess that's the question, because otherwise, that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna open up a Pandora box, Pandora's box here.
Yeah, like, the, the foundation board can determine, and it has term limits, but.
Yes, but the foundation board isn't appointed by the supervisors.
Exactly, because they vote on each member, and we don't, yeah, they have a lot more, they're a different kind of board, and they have different authorities.
Okay, well, in that case, um, let's just leave it alone, good.
But I think these things need to be discussed, because if, if, was it the last meeting, but the meeting before is any indication, members of the board are gonna have questions, so I think that we need to be ready to talk about them and not be blindsided and say, oh, I don't know.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah.
If this, this sentence even needs to be in here, since we are appointed by the board, I, I know for a fact that what has come up in the last, since, 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 since the new board has been elected. You know, they're, they're looking to make it a more diverse board, and so. No, but then you're going back to, we're here at the mercy, not the mercy, but we're here appointed.
Pleasure.
By the pleasure of the, the board supervisors, I'm just wondering if we need this sentence.
Well, you know, you bring up a point, like, maybe it should, maybe there should be a statement, you know, each member serves at the discretion of the appointing supervisor. You know, and especially in light of the recent episode with Phil, where, you know, we didn't, there wasn't a, there wasn't guidance, except sort of oral tradition and, and knowledge more than oral tradition, that.
If you wanted to do that, that would be a footnote like the other.
Yeah.
Other information items, or the other items which are informational, but over which we have no control, you could have a statement of. Well. If you wanted to have an opinion about how many, what's the maximum number of terms a, a board member should serve, you could do that, I don't know if you'd have it in your bylaws, or if you'd have it somewhere else, but you could say, if, if we had an opinion that, you know, board members should, should not put themselves up for reappointment after whatever, four terms, five terms. I mean, there is something to be said for longevity there.
But, well, I think, I know in the past, we, I mean, even Liz Clements, whose place I took, I mean, she was on the board forever.
Right.
Just forever, and I, because I remember talking to her. You know, a long time before she finally decided to step down, that, you know, if she, when she ever did, I would be interested, and, you know, and then just went on and on, but, but back to putting in something about servant, they don't actually serve at the discretion of the supervisor, because there was some question as to whether, I guess because they're voted on by the whole board, then the supervisor really doesn't have that much appointment, I mean, the supervisor makes an appointment which is approved by the support, the, the big board, and so. I don't think we could really say they serve at the discretion of the supervisor, because they don't.
I'll ask the county attorney about that.
I think we need.
Whether or not that's true, and whether or not it should be included in the bylaws.
That's a good idea, because, yeah, that's a real good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including it that way helps explain to the public how this works, I don't think it has an impact on us necessarily, and I do think if we think there's value in term limits. That, that should be discussed at a different time, so we can figure out what those would be, and what's the process for getting the board of super, I think the board of supervisors would have to make a change or something, if we want a term limit.
Yeah, I think it would have been helpful, and we had all those letters to write to people about Phil, that, you know, there was guidance, that we could really have stated something like. I mean, we knew that it wasn't up to us.
It's not up to us, yeah.
So, I, I, yeah, Christine, that's good.
So we'll check with the, with, with county attorney on that point, and just leave it open, okay.
Did that also be the person on term limits?
Yes, I was gonna.
Okay.
Ask if members serve at the pleasure of the appointing authority, do we note it in the bylaws, and term limits, could we, could this board even recommend them if it chose to do so?
Good.
Yeah, okay.
You're so good with words.
So number one.
Writing as you guys have been talking.
So in footnote number one, then, we would also include. That we are, let me see what it says here. Where, where, what's that, let me just see here. Okay, that's all about the foundation.
Yeah, and that, you could, I guess so, and that each Fairfax County Supervisor District is represented on them, are they supervisor district or magisterial district?
I hear it both ways.
I hear them referred to as magisterial, so maybe that's another thing to verify, but if, I guess that would be the place to put any other. Well, I don't know, that's something that I find, yeah, whether it goes there or in the body of the bylaws, I don't know, is that what you were saying, Chris, Sheila, is what you were sort of talking?
Yes, yeah, I think it just needs to be clarified someplace.
Yeah.
Because then it takes away some of the discussion that really will leave no place, okay, so, so Christine, you're gonna check on. How the appointment goes forward and term limits, is that right?
That is correct.
Right, okay, good.
Sorry if I'm making you dizzy by zipping back up.
No, that's, no, that's good, that's good, okay, so now we're on, so now we're moving on to article number four. In the duties. I've got, I have a lot of, I have a lot of vocabulary questions, so in A, manage and control the Fairfax County Public Library according to the code forty-two, one, one dash thirty-five. I'm not, I guess I, I'm confused as to what, what does it mean, we manage and we control Fairfax County Public Library? That seems very great, big, and, and.
I agree, and I actually think that Jessica manages and controls the Fairfax County Public Library, and that you guys establish and enact policies.
Let me just, let me just look up the code section and see what that actually says.
Right, because I didn't, good, because I looked at it, and I didn't see anything, but I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, forty-two point one thirty-five, library boards generally, the management and control of a free public library system shall be vested in a board of not less than five members or trustees, they shall be appointed by governing body chosen from the citizens at large with reference to their fitness for such office, so that's where management and control comes from, so I would suggest. That, that's your general authority of power, they don't mean, this doesn't mean the type of day-to-day management and control that Jessica has responsibility for, and the truth is, we have the management control, and by hiring Jessica, we delegate it to her.
That's right.
I think is the way you think about it.
Exactly.
That's a good point.
Yeah. So we just, because the language is already in the code, then we just leave it as is, even though it looks like we have more control in management oversight than we actually do.
Well, you know, it's almost as if it, it would be that. B, C, and D. Define what management control means, so that it may be saying, the library board shall manage and control the Fairfax County Public Library, A, establish and act policies, B, budget, select a director.
That's exactly what I was, that was missing, but I think that's good.
Because there, that's the, what that, that defines what managing control means.
Right, because then we do define it very, very carefully, and I think that especially for the new members who are coming in, they, you know, it, it, it takes a while to say, no, we have nothing to do with operations, with staff, with, you know, all of those things that we think we, at the beginning, when we're first on the board, we think we have something to do, so.
I think, can't you cut and paste it?
So, cut and paste, so we'll just do, we'll just have the, the statement, management, can, manage and control, and then A, B, and C underneath that, which.
So is this right?
What, yeah.
Oh, no.
The man, yeah.
Yeah.
I hate trying to.
Track changes is fussing with me, but if I make it say, the library board shall manage and control the Fairfax County Public Library, and then these A, B, and C are underneath that.
Perfect.
I think it's because of the formatting that makes it really hard to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, was, yeah.
That's good, alright.
Great.
Okay, then we, here, here we come to elections, and Fran, did.
Shall I go through what I, my?
Yeah, you, you've been, you, you've done a lot of research on this one, so.
Right, so, I don't know.
Do you wanna share?
That would be great, that would be terrific.
Okay, hang on a second.
I also typed up a plain word document of it, too, that doesn't have, just for my own clarification, but. Once you get it up there, before it goes up there, and I did send that to committee members, I don't know if it sent it to everybody, I might have, but.
I don't think I, I don't think I received it, but I was, I was out of. You know, well, outlook for a while.
This one.
Okay, here we go.
This is, I really made a lot of changes, because it just didn't seem to be in a logical order to me, so that I made the, the main headings under, under elections, so officials. And then a separate one for the foundation person, then nominations, actual elections, and terms of office. Is, so it's very, it's different from the way that it was, so first, the officers are officials, so which should we call up, because we have it two different ways, and I, you know, it says officials, and under officials, then we have the officers. Which one is this?
This one is yours.
Okay. Alright, so under officials, the officers of the library board shall be, I think you can read that, be chair, vice chair, and non-voting secretary, library director shall serve as a non-voting secretary to the board. That's fine, and then go on, move it, yeah, up, and then that's it, and then if you go up, it should have. The representative to the, should be section two, representative to the foundation.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
So.
Are you gonna put that under officials?
I'm sorry, I'm lost, Fran, tell me where I'm supposed to be.
Article five.
Oh, Article five, okay, I thought you were saying, oh, section two is down, sorry, gotcha.
And, yeah, so the old one is, I don't know what happened there, but at any rate, section two. Representative to the Fairfax Library Foundation. A trustee shall serve one term as an ex officio voting member of the foundation board.
So that's all, one.
And that, that wording may need to be fixed, and then we go to nominations, and what's, so, but we should go through each one, I guess, then your nomination process, then the election process, then the terms of office. Okay, so that's the change in, in organization.
What does ex officio voting member, I thought ex officio meant you're not a voting member.
No, it doesn't, it's, no, and that's why I want to, to clarify it, because actually, I looked up ex officio, and it means by virtue of the office, and it.
Okay.
And, and, and in that content, and in that meaning is a voting member, but because at our meeting, we had this big discussion, I thought they weren't, I thought they were, I thought they weren't, I'm like, well, let's just put it in there, even though it is redundant, but I thought, for the future, we'll have it.
Alright.
Have it in there, so there won't be confusion of, of what, what the term means, but. So, that's the, unless we wanna put that in as a footnote, X, hey, ex officio means voting member, but by virtue of the office, so by virtue of the representative. Also, so. I think that's okay with officials, and I don't know whether we wanna keep the representative to the foundation separate, or put it under that.
Well, if it's elect, if it's an elected official, it needs to go there, because I, that, that was very confusing. Because it was under an appointment to committees, and then, you know, the discussion.
No, it wasn't underappointed, it, it wasn't, it hadn't been, it, it became that way, but that, but it, that was not in the.
Right, but I mean, that was, that, that was the discussion that we.
I guess that, I was wondering if. If that would be considered unofficial, I mean, if we wanna do that, just that we, and do we wanna use the term officials or officers?
I vote for officers.
I do, too.
Okay, so then section one, we should change that.
Or something.
Yeah. Okay, good. Then, actually, then in A, it could just be the offices of library, which will be a chair, vice chair, non-voting secretary, and representative to the library foundation, it doesn't need to be.
A, B, and C, then, that's it. Oh, I see, so just put it all under A.
I would think so, because then. And then just as a library director shall be, shall serve as a non-voting secretary.
Did I get that right, Fairfax Library Board?
No, Fairfax Library Foundation.
Of course, thank you.
You know, I have a question, though, about that. Say, say the person who is the representative to the foundation wants to have equal involvement as an, as the officers of the chair and vice chair.
Yeah, they're not an officer.
Like, yeah, I mean, is it even possible for three of us non-staff to be talking? The way sometimes, you know, the chair and vice chair have to talk to move things along.
That's true. So maybe it's.
I would leave it the way you had it, as not an officer, they're just a.
Okay.
A special.
Separate, okay, good.
Super nice person.
Special, special.
All this typing.
We're giving you a bunch.
Other duties as assigned, eh? Okay, that's great, and then could, so I think we're good with that.
So that's A, B, and C, right?
There's no C anymore.
Okay, well, where did you?
Because the C is moved to somewhere else.
Yeah.
Right.
Because number C is about the election, it's not about what they are, so I took it out, and it's under elections.
So where is the? So where is the, the library foundation?
Keep going, keep going, and there it is, in section two, it's, it's clearly been crossed out and put in, and then I couldn't get it to do right there, but.
Okay, so this is.
Representative to the Fairfax Library Foundation. And, you know, if that language, then.
Yeah, that's fine, a trustee shall serve one year as an ex officio voting member of the Fairfax.
And.
Library Foundation.
I talked to Lisa about, because they refer to them as directors, and so she did, she would like. Our terminology to be the same, so that director. Ex officio voting director.
Okay. Okay.
So, and I'm sorry, I, I'm still confused with ex officio, ex officio.
Uh huh, okay, well, because I looked it up, the, the term, the Latin term ex officio means out of the office, or by virtue of the office being held. And it, it includes the, the voting. What's the word? Ability.
Purge.
So. So if she's a representative, so we'll call it that. I mean, I don't know what else to call it. I mean, that's what it always was called to.
Oh, no, that's fine with me. I, how and how are we explaining how that very special foundation representative becomes selected?
The, with the, through the nominating process, the nominating committee?
Oh, that'll, that'll come. Okay.
Yeah. 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 Well, I mean, it is interesting. But I guess it's okay that, you know, the library board then has two representatives to the foundation board. The library itself has three, the director, then the two from the, the library board, the chair, and then a representative. So, and I'll just digress, but I talked to Lisa about that to say, what, what do you see as the role of that person? Because I felt my vision of it is that someone who reports to the library board on what is going on with the foundation. I haven't really communicated that to Suzanne. I mean, informally I have, but in the conversation that I had with Lisa, I raised the possibility of quarterly report because the foundation board meets quarterly rather than calling on Suzanne every month, but quarterly for a quarterly report with highlights of their accomplishments and actually then she, because she was the phone call with Shelby as well, and they will do a, it's almost like the, a bullet, a one-page sheet of here's what, here's what's happened. Here's the financial. So it'll be a very straightforward. My feeling is that especially evident when, when you have, when we had the new members of the trustees that there's not a lot of knowledge of what the library foundation does. And I want that to be communicated to the board. And so now we will have a mechanism with a report that is a quarterly port from the foundation delivered through the representative. I feel really good about that. I think that's a good solution to instead of. I mean, you know, Will was a great guy, but all we ever heard was, oh, the gala will be on such and such a date, so be sure to buy your ticket. And that's important, but I think it's more important, like, what are they doing? What have they done? What have, you know, and so. There you go.
Okay.
So that I haven't put that into the job description, but I will. Okay. So we're good with that? Okay, so then.
The nominations. This needs to be.
That's pretty much what it was.
Yeah, let's see what you've got here.
Each year at the April meeting, the chair shall appoint a nominating committee of two board members whose responsibilities shall be to establish the slate of officers to include chair, vice chair, and representative to the.
Why don't we just make it two sentences? So each year at the April meeting, the chair shall appoint a nominated committee of two board members' responsibilities shall be to establish the slate of officers to include chair, vice chair and representative and representative to the LLF.
LLF.
Board. No, FLF.
LLF.
Board.
Board. Yeah, you're right.
Period.
And we can spell out FLF, right?
Absolutely.
Board. And then say each then just mimic the same words. Each year at the May meeting, the nominating committee shall report.
Okay, right.
Shall report the nominations.
So right here.
Period.
Playing on my screen. So are you going to copy? Right?
I got lost here. Each.
Okay, so, so.
You go ahead.
Don't do that. Take that off.
Don't take that off. Yeah.
Take that off. Though, go to right there. Take away the and. So you're going to say, you're going to type each year at the May meeting, comma. Comma, the nominating committee shall report the nominations, period.
That's so much better than.
And then you can just get rid of the sent, the rest of that sentence.
Good.
Not the whole thing, not the whole thing, just to the, there you go.
Yeah.
Delete that.
Yeah.
And neither the chair nor the vice chair shall be eligible to be on the nominating committee.
Period. Yep.
And then delete for this assignment. Period. Okay. All right.
All right, and.
Now, this brings up another question I have. In some places it says at the regular name of month meeting.
Oh, yeah. Take out regular. I don't know what the hell. Oh, yeah, take that out because otherwise if you need to call a special meeting because the.
And that becomes.
Get screwed up. You should be able to do that.
Right, okay.
Just get rid of.
Okay, good.
So the next, so, so that's A, then B is.
And any trustee may.
They submit their name or the name of another trustee to the nominate committee.
With the regular meeting, so.
By two weeks before the May meeting.
Okay.
Only those persons who have signified their consent to serve if elected shall be nominated for election. Okay.
So should nominations shall be announced via a separate letter? I don't know.
No, a nomination should be asked in the May meeting. So I was wondering about the current D, additional nominations should maybe made at the May or June meetings from the floor. Do you really want, should we have not have the June meeting anymore? Why, if people hear the slate and they don't want to, they want to put up somebody else, I don't think they should be able to do it at the June meeting. Either they have to do it at the May meeting or you give them a deadline, like a week after or something, so that their names can go in the packet for the June meeting.
That's good.
That's exactly what one of the points that I had here. Exactly.
Great.
So have it say additional nominations may be made at the May meeting.
Period.
Or or within, I don't know.
Let's just say that.
No, at the May meeting.
Well, what if somebody hears the slate and they go home and they say, I want to throw my hat and then my name in the ring after the May meeting. Like, so for instance, so for instance, the nominating committee gets three names for chair. You know, I put my name in and then the nominating committee doesn't pick me and I learned that at the May meeting. And I'm sitting there stewing, but it's not until I get home that I say, I'm putting my name in and people can vote for me. So I think we should give them an opportunity to put their name in after the May meeting.
But the nominating can, committee isn't making choices. They, if, if their name is in there, they would announce it. They wouldn't drop it.
They would. No, they would drop it. If they have three people who have put their names into the nominating committee, nominating committee picks one. But they're not the voting. They're not.
No, but where does it say that you can only have three? Where, where does it say three names?
No, no, no. The nominating committee meets, they get nominations. Let's say they have three names put in for the position of chair. They're going to pick one to stand behind. But the people who didn't get selected to be nominated, they may still want to put their name on the ballot. They.
Miriam, I don't think that's right. I think the nominating committee only gathers the names.
I've done, I've done it twice.
Yeah, I've done it as well.
No, that's not how.
Yeah, because they voted. I remember losing the election for chair to you.
Yeah, but that was after you put your own name in.
No, I didn't.
To a nominating committee.
No, it was on there.
Miriam, I think the point of this nominating committee is just making sure that it's somebody on the board other than the chair or the vice chair. Because one time I actually.
Why is it called a nominating committee? A nominating committee actually nominates to the positions.
Yeah, we're.
We nominate somebody. If you want it just to be.
Gathering committee?
Gathering names. Don't call it a nominating committee. There's no point to it. They should just send their names to Christine.
That's what the com, committee does, whether or not it's
Yeah.
appropriately named is.
I don't.
You know, I, my.
That's how I understood it worked.
Oh, my experience reflects what Miriam is saying. It, in the PTA world, right, we have way more examples of people who want to, want to serve in some instances and it can get really political. And so our nominating committees take the names, they make sure everyone knows they have a fair chance at participating. They take the names and then they make recommendations to the voting body. Here's who we recommend for the candidates. And if they're smart, they let the the people they haven't chosen know before it's at this big public announcement, so they don't hurt people's feelings. So that's how I think a nominating committee.
But, but Jane, can, so i- in the PTA world, though, the point is that you have a slate. But the election is not, I mean, if somebody can still, well, I'm asking you, somebody could still throw their name in to run against the slate.
Exactly. And that's.
So that's what should, that's what.
And that's why I, I think our bylaws should also say that a nomination can be made from the floor during the election. So, I mean, say you had some.
Well, yeah.
Election, right? Like, say we had a bunch of board members who wanted the 1776 curriculum highlighted in the libraries and they wanted a director who agreed with their point of view. A- and, and they slated someone for the next chair who was just a wackadoo. But then that person left town. So by saying someone can nominate, a nomination can be taken from the floor, sorry, I'm getting convoluted. If there's a crisis and the person put up for election can't stand for election, you have, I'm talking about two different things. But if, if someone can't stand for election by the time that date comes around, you need the flexibility, the board needs the flexibility for someone to be able to be nominated and run that evening.
Okay, well, in that case, then, then my suggested change, then, then just ignore my suggested change. And in fact, it'll say nominations that then leave what's there. And D, additional nominations may be made at the May meeting or June meeting from the floor.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
And just leave it. And then you end up, you, you may end up with one candidate for chair or you may end up with however many, you know, people want to throw their name back in.
And that's fine. That's why we.
Yeah, that's.
The only thing that I think you guys might want to hammer out at some point is whether or not this is a true nominating committee and it makes recommendations, or if you want to change the name and say nominations will be accepted.
No, no, I think what Jane and I are saying is they do make a recommendation. They announce a slate.
I, I understand, Miriam, but that's not how it works right now.
That is how, well, that's how it.
It hasn't had.
That is how it works.
It hasn't had to work that formally. I think things have just been handled conversationally.
So I just think you just eat, need to set that expectation that that's.
Well, okay, but what, if you go back up to A, it says each year at the May meeting. Oh, okay. So what it should say is each year at the May meeting, the nominated committee shall report its recommended slate of officers. That's what it should say then.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good way to handle it.
I love it. And I, whoops, did you finish that? No.
And then it says neither chair nor vice chair. And then if you go down, it says nominations, additional nominations may be made at the May meeting or June meeting from the floor. So that's additional, in addition to the slate of officers.
I don't think you need the word meeting twice there, at the May or June meeting.
Yeah.
Right. I don't think the meeting, I don't think it should be plural, though, or meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
Do we, do we want of the board here or take that out because of the board?
Oh, you're right. Yeah, take that out.
Right, right.
And because this is such a long, a long process and has many, many steps to it, I would like to see B be the May meeting to, to have one, the April meeting, one A, and then B be the May meeting.
I agree. Yeah. I thought that's what you're going to do and I like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then shouldn't then the sentence, either the chair or the vice chair should be eligible, should go be moved up to A because that's appointing the nominating committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
I think that's clear enough.
Okay, that's good.
All right, that's good.
Then the, then we move on to elections.
Oh, we're not.
Looks like a rainbow of nominating goodness.
Shows the diversity.
So then, A, the chair, vice chair, and representative to the shall be elected by vote annually at the regular June meeting of the board. So that's.
Just at the June meeting, period.
Then B, because I couldn't get it to do B. If a quorum, and then I put in a definition of quorum because I had to look it up for when we weren't sure who could come to a certain meeting. And it's a simple majority of the appointed trustees. If my quorum is not present, a special meeting shall be called as soon as possible for the purpose of holding the election.
Okay, that's good.
So terms of office, the chair, vice chair, representative of the shall assume their official duties on July 1st, but I wonder if that should be at the July meeting.
Yeah, July meeting.
More sense.
Yeah.
Unless something happens, there isn't a July meeting, we still want to say a July 1st. Someone brought that up to me that it should be broader than at the meeting. So.
Well, the other reason it was July 1st was so that that chair could run the July meeting and have an opportunity to prepare for it.
Okay.
I think somehow that's why we ended up with a date like that, as opposed to the July meeting, in which case, you know, you do that weird handoff thing during the meeting, which is a little, so the last meeting for the former chair is June.
Right, then in June, and then at that meeting in the roundtable, everyone could say, God, what a great job you did. Thanks.
Exactly. You're brilliant.
And good luck to the next person. Okay. He, an officer shall not be eligible to serve more than two consecutive terms in the same office, except the secretary. In the event of a vacancy in the office of the chair, the vice chair shall serve their minimum term. And these are the same, I think, in the event of, yeah, okay, so, yeah. Okay, so I don't, I don't think I need to read them because they're the same. And then.
And then where, where are we now?
Where is? Are you letting the cat in here? No, you're leaving. Okay.
Should we, do we have a D?
Okay. Oh, Bill's going to go buy us a new TV. Yay. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I guess we can scroll up.
Here we go.
Then duties.
So all of this is taken out. Okay.
I think because I couldn't move it, I had to.
Wait a minute, wasn't there something about one year or is that, is that someplace else?
Yes, right here.
Right there.
Okay, right now, we did have a question about that.
Okay.
At the last meeting.
Oh, that's right. Liz asked me, or Liz brought that up about making the term two years and.
I, I.
I'm going to order to you.
I don't see what's wrong with one year because it says that you're, the per, the, the person that is eligible to serve two consecutive terms, which would mean that there would be an election.
Yeah, I think it might be, I think maybe Jane and I were talking about it, might be difficult talking to, for the nominating committee to get somebody to run for two years.
There's definitely an advantage to a two-year term.
Yeah.
But it, it's hard to attract people to that kind of commitment, I think.
Really? This is a board where people like get on it in their, in their 30s and don't leave until they're 80s. So, you know, two years is a drop. No, I'm kidding, but.
I think that's, I just, I, I think I've heard it both ways. And, you know, say, say you want to be a vice chair so you can learn the job and then be a chair. If the chair term is two years, what happens to that vice chair? Is that a person then signing on for four years? And I, I think as long as you have the ability to serve two terms, it also gives the board, I mean, if you are a really bad chair, it gives the board that check and balance to remove you after a year.
Yeah.
Keeps you on your toes. Make sure that you're not calling it in or zooming it in as the case.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And also.
It's also consecutive. So if, if somebody in their, in their 40s serves a term, then when they're in their 50s, they can serve another term. 60s, they can serve another term. Okay, that's good.
Okay. And also just.
Okay. And also, just to add, the, the third point is that we're appointed for three years at a time. At least that's the way my. I thought mine was three years, so.
It's two years.
What, yours is two years?
I think it's, I think mine is two years.
No, I thought it was three, but anyway, I can check that. Okay. So now what we're on to, number six, the duties of the officers. I was getting my penny folder to look up the term, but I'll do that later. So the duties, the chair shall preside at all board meetings that they, that they attend. It's weird, but anyway. Appoint all committees initiating consultation with secret and agenda, blah, blah, sign all documents emanating to the board from board action, be a spokesperson, serve as an ex officio voting, and that should be director on the Fairfax Library Foundation. Right. And then here we ha, I just want us to have the same, and here we have Board of Directors. Just a minute, Fran, I have a question. So sign all documents and communications emanating from board action. I was wondering, oh, this is the chair, right, so a board action would be the MOU type of, of, of an action, right? I'm looking, I'm just. What I was wondering about is, for the first time since I've been on the board, all those letters that were coming in, they had to do with Phil's comments. And so suddenly, I mean, that was the first time I have been in the position, and I think that, I don't, I don't speak just for myself, that we were, that I was writing letters explaining the library board and, and our objectives and, and Fairfax County's objectives and mission statements. So the, so the, that D wouldn't have anything to do with what the, um, the chair is responsible for.
Um.
Clear?
I mean, the chair cannot, it cannot, we're not saying that the chair is the only one who can or should be responsible for responding to letters. We just don't say anything about it, which is fine.
Okay, okay. It wasn't interesting because, because letters often came to the chair and to the individual, and so then.
So you guys, I'm gonna drop off here in just a couple of minutes, but I authorize, I, I give you my ex officio vote.
Nice.
For the rest of the, is the, let me just ask, is the plan to finalize this and then include it for the board package in? What month are we?
Well, if we wanted, if we wanted it to, I, I don't know what, I don't, yes, I'm sorry, I'm speaking, and I'm not the chair. Right, no, we, we have one, we have one, um, Policy W is, is going to be on the agenda for the, what, what, what month? And that will be for consideration. And I think that we only should do one thing at a time with, at the library board because it's, there are too many questions, we have to be able to answer them in a way that makes sense and, and so they're clear. So one, one at a time. So this is not for February, this would be, gosh. Mark. A guest for consideration in March. Well, this, before you go, I have a question, like, do we want to, um, do a partial bylaw presentation? Or do you think the whole thing has to be ready?
Well, the, the thing that you should consider is whether or not you want to have like a new business-type discussion about some elements of it just in a discussion format without, if there's anything in here that you think is, I don't really think there's anything controversial, to be honest with you, but if you wanted to have a different way to talk about it, you could take whatever element and make it a discussion without any votes or whatever. It's a discussion item to get people's views on whatever aspect of this you care about. Uh, and then, and then in theory, the policy committee would take those views into account and then put the matter on for consideration. But practically, it would give people an opportunity to think about this before the actual, the one time that they can discuss. But honestly, I don't really think there's anything in this that's particularly, you know.
The, the thing that struck me about the discussion at the board meeting was how much I don't know about bylaws. I thought I, I, I was used to using bylaws for a long time for a different organization. And so I found the questions, but I was worried that other board members might have thought these, these were not going to serve us or put us at risk, but then I came to really appreciate there are people with a lot of knowledge about this, and I had hoped that they would be able to participate in the policy committee discussion, um, because this is the place, you know, for them to educate people like me. So I, I'm just wondering if, when we put this up for consideration, is it possible, Fran, for you to even send a draft as a standalone email to people saying, you know, as, as we told you, we met, here's what the policy committee is going to be recommending. If you have thoughts or questions ahead of time, or if you would like to have a discussion at a board meeting, please let us know so we can work that into the agenda.
All right, you guys, I'm sorry, sorry to just drop off here, but I gotta go.
Okay. Bye, Miriam. So you guys, I hate to be the, the, because I don't know that I'm really truly a, a procedural wonk, but I think that's what we're supposed to do as, as the consideration item. So I think you're actually making it a consideration item twice if you do that. And I think the, the, the fact that you invited folks to this meeting.
Yeah, really heavily invited.
Yeah, encourage people to come, and whether or not they were able to make the time speaks to kind of how important it is. I, I mean, I, I don't mean that to be dismissive, but.
No, I agree, I just, I don't want to, um, it just seemed like tension, i- it felt a little tense when it didn't need to be, and so I just don't want to set up Sheila or Fran in that situation for, in a further discussion of this, where it's like rapid-fire questions.
Jane, I agree with what, what, what you said. I was really kind of surprised at, at the tone of some of the questions and the questions. But I think that this really needs to be read as one document and not chopped up because one thing leads to another. Everything links to, to the thing that comes before it, so, um, I, I will say at the meeting, prior to it going into a consideration item, that pe, that we expect board members to have read it and to be ready to discuss, and, um, and maybe I can say a little bit more about how the bylaws work as, you know, going from the broad to the narrow and how they're all related to each other.
And I would also say that I think I was not terribly helpful in this because I, I just didn't know the background to it, and I feel like having asked the county attorney a couple of questions and the questions that I'm going to follow up on too will enable either me or Sheila to say with confidence, no, actually, we can't do that, or no, that's outside of the purview, and so that kind of sets some parameters, too.
And that's what, that's, that's the reason I've been so picky in some of the things, because I do want to be ready to be able to address questions that may come up, because I, like Jane, thought, you know, thought, oh, I know how this is going, I glanced at all of these, I haven't really studied them. So, um, you know, I think that I'm glad that, that people have questions, but I, I think that our committee needs to be ready to, to predict the questions and to be able to answer them with some certainty. So that's why we keep throwing things back at you, Christine, to, to check up for us.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I think we should be able to say, answer these questions with confidence, and, and I apologize that I was not able to do that at the last meeting, so.
Oh, no, no, no. You weren't the only one, we were, we're all blindsided, so, at least I was. A question I have is can, um, if, when it's, once it's sent out as a consideration item, can trustees submit questions before the board meeting? Before it, it is discussed as an action item, like, the, um, I mean, they were, and, and the one I'm thinking, the format, like, if, here's a consideration item, which will be voted on at the next meeting. Before the next meeting, you can submit questions to the committee by two weeks before the meeting, and the questions would then become part of the board packet so that the questions would be viewable by the public as well, um, as the trustee, other trustees, and the committee would have had a chance to be thinking about the questions before the meeting, not, and, and maybe even have a meeting to discuss, I don't know. But, um, I, I guess to boil it down, my, can questions from trustees be submitted and included then in the packet for the action item?
I don't, I don't think for the action item, I think it would be before the consideration item.
But, but they, it hasn't been publicized before the pub, the consideration item. See, I'm saying, like.
Well, it, a couple days before it is, because they get the packet a couple days before, right? You get your board packet two or three days before the meeting.
That would give us time to. We don't discuss the consideration item.
Right, but.
But we could discuss it in a meeting.
But, but I think what could happen is you invite people to send questions, and then Sheila at the meeting says, here are some questions, while it's a consideration item. Here are some questions that I've received, and here's how the committee considered them in the deliberations. Meaning, i- if it were totally new, you wouldn't be able to have an answer to it. But if, say, there was a question about, say Liz re-asks the question about, um, did you consider term limits? And then Sheila could say, we did, and here's why we decided that one was the best, there's merit to both. But in order to attract people and not scare people away from a long-term commitment, the committee decided to stick with one year. Does that answer your question? You'd still are looking pensive.
Yeah, because I, I'm not sure the time, the timeframe here. So, so February, consideration item, and no discussion. But those things go out, they go out like the five days beforehand, and people can look at it and send in their questions. Well, but that's the whole process of the.
Doesn't Sheila get an opportunity at the consideration item, and I may be totally wrong about this, but doesn't she get an opportunity to walk through and say?
Really? I thought that. Does she read it then? I think they're supposed to read it by themselves at home, you know, study it by. Reading, yeah. Well, not because, um, I think that's what happened. The last meeting, we were, we were voting on, the action item was, I think it was Policy J. And then we started to review the bylaws, and, you know, we went on and on and on, you know.
Right.
Finally had to cut the discussion off, but, um. So I just.
I'm back, my, uh, meeting got canceled.
You missed it.
Isn't that exciting? So exciting.
I just had a very funny thought, that, that because we're women, I can say this, that this is almost like, I remember trying to figure out, okay, so two weeks before my period, I've ovulated, and I can.
Do you remember that this is public, right, and it's going to be posted?
Oh, well, okay, never mind, but it's that complicated for me. Okay, so the consideration item in February, and it goes out to everyone, and then two weeks before the March meeting, then the March meeting, it will become an action item, and two weeks before the March meeting, we have, um, we publicize it again as an action item, and that. No, the action. So if we had questions from people, that's when they would be made, those questions could be made public then, before the meeting. And then if the, if the, if the committee met, um, a week before the March meeting, could discuss those questions to be ready for the discussion at the meeting, and all that would be public. But Fran, I don't think a week before would give, let's say there are questions that, that we needed our director to track down with the county attorney, for example, I don't think that gives, that there's enough time in between to guarantee that we would have that type of meeting. Right, okay, I see it now. Yeah, I, I think that we should leave it as a discussion, because if people send us questions, it, it becomes a question and answer for them. But it's not a discussion. I mean, there may be other people on the board who have another point of view if we're trying to understand something. You know, the bylaws. I'm good. I don't know, I don't know. So shall we continue going through the? Yeah, let's, let's, let's. Duties, because we didn't finish that. We haven't finished that, right, so. So we're good with the chair. We made that change, and then the vice chair shall act in the absence of the chair, and she's assigned by the chair. Oh, I didn't, I remember, I think, the secretary shall, and I think these are the same. Except, uh, yeah, um, in hard copy and electronically.
Do you want me to take of the board out, because it's not in the others?
Yeah, that's good. Send notification of each regular meeting in hard copy and electronically, and we did that last time. Oh, and then on D, maintain the minutes of all minute, of all meetings online.
Excuse me, Fran, do we want to take out regular, because the secretary would take, would send all meetings regardless of if they're regular?
That's a good point, yeah, very good.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, I'm going too fast. Yeah. I think that we made the changes that we wanted to, what we were basically doing was taking out the print copy and putting in online. We, you know, on D, it's online. And I wondered if we wanted to add on the, on the library website. Right, no, I did, oh, I thought that we had done that, so. But that hadn't been, and that had not been, just because this is my copy, right? Okay, now then, on G, I made this change, once again, the ex officio voting member, which should be director now, that, go back to that, yeah.
Not capitalized?
I think not capitalized is right.
I'm sorry, Sheila, was there, was I supposed to make a change up here?
No.
Okay.
No, no, sorry about that, no. So this is, this is my, the separate, uh, bylaws with my stuff, so that'll have to be put into the regular one, right, Christine?
Say that again.
Isn't this from my file? Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll go, okay.
Yes. Um, and do we, do you definitely want it to say on the library website, because there is a possibility, like, for example, right now, where we post stuff is not technically on the library's website, it's on Springshare, which is a third-party vendor.
Oh, okay.
But you access it through the library's website, so.
Right. Well, maybe, you know what, maybe we should say, maintain the minutes or ensure the accessibility of the minutes on the, on line or something like that. Oh, yeah, I didn't know that, so that, that can come out, just online. Right. I think that's good, that's fine. Right, and technology seems to be changing so much. Yeah. I think that just online covers. Great. Okay, good. Go ahead, Jane.
Mean number, uh, letter E, index and codify all current policies of the board. What does codify mean in this instance?
Legal expert, Miriam?
She's gone. Go on again.
She fled the scene.
Does that just mean put him in the, the format of a code? I don't know, I'm just guessing. So Christine, you're the, the, uh, ad hoc secretary now.
I will happily find out, I don't know what, what that means.
Doesn't it just mean keep them all?
All I can think about is the Code of Hammurabi was the first codified thing of, I mean, I'm really pulling stuff from eighth grade here.
Most impressive.
Thanks.
I mean, another word will be preserve, but, um.
I, you know what, I wonder if this language is in that, um, section of the Virginia Code.
Probably is.
Um, and so we just lifted it, I'll look into that and see if there's something.
Like, it, it just sounds legalese, and that seems exclusive.
Yeah.
And, and I, I want to be able to understand everything in here.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I had, my assignment. Okay, and so meetings, was there anything? So we've gone through that, it seems.
Question. I guess my only question in, um. B, well, I understand it, but I'm just curious about it on. Only those items listed on the notification agenda shall be discussed at the spec- in a special meeting. So, all right. Yeah, I didn't have anything, anything else there.
Okay, so we moved down to committees.
Committees. It looks like we've changed, um. Shouts and wills and.
So there's the term officials again, which I think we changed that in the other one.
Yeah, officers.
Do we say officers?
Why is this? Why is officers even in here?
That's what, I, I don't know.
I'm just gonna look up the, um.
This seems like it should, this should just come out.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, that should be there at all. Okay, we've changed that. Yep. Amendment bylaws.
This is awkward. I don't know how to.
Yeah.
At the meeting immediately preceding the vote?
Well, that sounds like the. Consideration action item process, doesn't it? Yeah, I think that makes sense. It makes sense to me.
Do we wanna use that word regular again? Take that word regular out?
Fran, when you said it makes sense, did you mean the language I had highlighted or the language I proposed?
I don't remember what you proposed.
Okay, then, then that's fine. Then we'll just.
Well, and I wonder if it's important to have regular there because you're. Just because you're asking for a two-thirds vote and if someone had called a special meeting, um, previously. Then there might not be. You know, there could be some irregularity in getting them passed. So it seems to me that's a good place for it.
Well, suppose there was something. Proposed amendment. So that means that was whatever it was, was submitted as. A consideration item, basically. Maybe we should just say that rather than.
Yeah, maybe we should call it what it would be called in the actual agenda.
Yeah.
Would that ever be changed though? This consideration item.
Well, is that part of, um, Robert's rules? Are those terms from there?
I don't know.
Well, and I think. Phrasing it this way shows that you need to be thoughtful. If, if you wanna amend something, you need to be thoughtful and planned about it.
Right.
Present it as a consideration item just sounds more formal.
And we've also defined it in, um, previously. Haven't we talked about consideration items? Or am I, am I losing it at this point?
I don't think they're in the bylaws.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Okay.
So then we could take out regular since we've taken out the regular meeting and every other time it's, it's cropped up.
Well, Fran was saying that in this case, it, that prevents somebody ambushing by calling a special meeting. To discuss. Bylaws and then. Oh, well, no, because as long as it's a consideration item, there needs to be a quorum, right?
I don't think consider.
No, we don't have.
Consideration item mean there has to be.
No, the action has to be have, you know, the action when you vote has to have form. It's just that we've taken regular out ever, every other time it's cropped up. So. It's just trying to be consistent.
Yep, I, I don't, what, what's the consensus?
Or immediately proceed, previous, do we have to say immediately? Maybe, um. Do we have to say preview? I don't, I don't know.
I like it the way it is.
Yeah, just leave it.
That's why you're the chair.
I just.
Just do what Fran says.
There you go.
I'm thinking because with, um, rather than, than the quorum being, uh, a two-thirds of. The total number of trustees, it's of those present. So you could call a meeting just of the ones, the people you know agree with you. I mean, I don't know if you could really do that, but, but that, that's an, that's an interesting. Quorum, that it's a simple majority and the other one of those present rather than of the number. It's a lot easier to achieve a quorum. With, if it's just the majority of those people present. It's, that's very, there are two different kinds of quorums there and.
Right, and I don't, I think we've always used. When we've had something to vote on, you've always made sure we had seven people present.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh, yeah.
But I, but you don't really have to.
I, I think we do.
Doesn't, it just says of those present. It doesn't say a certain number. And a percent, a certain percentage of the total. It doesn't say that.
Where, when you're saying it doesn't say that, what's?
Bylaws don't say that, um, like for the elections, cause that's the one that I was working on.
Yeah. I'm getting low battery, so we're, let's.
Okay.
Flash up. So do we need to look at court, go back and look at quorum again or, um?
I'm gonna do that because I, I think the intention of quorum is to make sure that there are a critical mass of trustees present. Not that. The, those present vote in a certain way. So if we need to insert that, I'll ask the county attorney.
That's good. That's good.
Cause we had a, I know we had a big debate on that in the foundation when we redid their bylaws of what the quorum should be.
Well, I remember when they were voting on whether or not to accept Jessica. They had, it was, they were trying really hard to make sure that. That the meeting was at the Richard Byrd Library and a lot of people couldn't get there in traffic. And so we were trying to decide, where are we gonna have a quorum?
Right.
So.
You're right, yes. I forgot about that.
So it's been interpreted differently.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any changes to this? Oops.
Well, it says members and we were, and Jessica had asked for directors as the term to be used, since that's what they use.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna follow up on members. Serving at the pleasure of the appointing authority. Do we, um, note that in the bylaws? If so, where? Can we recommend term limits? If so, where would we do that? And I'm gonna look up indexing and codifying and see what that means. And then the county's interpretation of quorum. Is there any, are there any other action items?
We're gonna determine whether we should say magisterial district or supervisor.
Okay, I hadn't written that down. Thank you.
Okay. Now Christine, I don't, um. Unless we need to go over this again, I haven't received any kind of notification that we need to review any of the other policies. Do you know of anything?
No, I don't know of any additional ones.
So do we need to, um. Decide on another meeting or do you think that we're done for a while or?
Well, we have some open questions.
So we, so we might have open questions, yeah.
And then I, I was wondering, is it possible to have a, a copy that doesn't have all the, um. Changes and all of that.
So what, what we've promised the rest of the board is that they'll have. A copy that's the original plus any tracked changes. So I'm gonna consolidate the changes. Of your document and the one we worked on previously. And then a clean copy with what it, how it would read if all the changes were accepted.
Right, and you did that the last time and that was, that was very useful.
Yeah.
Useful. Yeah, that was good.
Anything else?
Okay, I think that's it. Um, I don't think that we should, since we have two people who aren't here, I think that we should, um. Decide later what, when our next meeting should be.
I guess one thing to think about with the meeting is, um, is like how's. When we could review them, review the new bylaws and have the answers to the questions. In time to get them in as a consideration item, but, but giving the, the committee and those who are interested time. To take another look and make sure everything seemed good. So, you know, that in terms of. Thinking of when to have a meeting, if, if that could be, so either between. Let's see, the next. Meeting is, I mean, the March meeting is March 10th. Which means February 24th, uh, it has to, um, go out. If it were a consideration, it has to be ready by the 24th, right? So then.
Confused what you're proposing though, Fran. I, I'm gonna send the clean copy of this and the track changes copy. And aren't, are you suggesting that? You, the committee get together to review it again before it goes out as a consideration item?
I am. I think that's a good idea because I, just as Sheila said, you know, it's good for us to be really familiar with it before it's on the floor. Uh, and once it's, and that means before it's a consideration item, because once it's a consideration item, we can't make any changes to it. So it's just a thought. Otherwise, I mean, if it, if it takes longer than March, I don't think that's a big deal. But I'm just, I'm just saying that as a.
So if we.
Thoughts or planning.
So if we do. Taking into consideration time limits, it probably should be, let's see. I don't know when it should be, um. Like today's the 21st. So Christine, when do you think that you would have the answers? I mean, you're, you're working with the county attorney, so.
Right. They were super fast last time. I, I don't, it just all depends on their workload. I, I, I can't predict it.
So what would your recommendation be since, well, it's in your court at this point?
Right, um. Fran, would it? Suit your purpose for me to work on getting the answers to the questions and send this out to you guys? And then if you decide you need another meeting, we can schedule one at that point. But it might be that. You know, you think on it and you look at it and you feel. Confident. I said that without a lot of confidence, didn't I?
Actually, the things that you're, the things you're looking up really have kind of definitive type answers. They're not. Mandatory. I mean, they're, they're yes or no type of answers. So why don't you go ahead and do that and then. We'll take it from there. We can then find a time to meet if we think we need to.
Yeah, because we essentially have a month because it's not gonna be a consideration item until March at the earliest, right?
Right, March 10th is the earliest, which means that it would need to be presented in, to be ready. For the packet by February 24th.
Right.
So that means if there's any discussion or a, a quick review to make sure that we're good with any. You know, would have to be before February 24th. Otherwise then, if, if that's too fast, then it, then it would be in. A consideration item in April.
Right.
Because I don't, I don't wanna have, you know, this free for all of, why don't you do this? Or why don't you do that? You know?
No.
So.
Sounds good.
Excuse me, I have to run. I didn't realize what time it is, so.
Okay, and we are finished, we are wrapped up, so.
Yeah.
It was lovely seeing you all.
You too.
Hey, very nice. Thanks for coming.
Have a great afternoon, everybody.
You too.
You too.